So what we started talking about last week is we started talking about what happened at Mount Sinai after the Israelites had arrived there. The first question you might ask is, why is it even important to talk about that event? Why is it important to talk about the people arriving at Mount Sinai? And we explained that it's because it was a turning point in the history of Israel with the Israelites, and therefore for all of humanity. Because right from Genesis chapter 12 onwards, God's focus was on Abraham and his descendants. And the reason why God's focus was on Abraham and his descendants is because God was preparing to roll out a plan which had begun right in the Garden of Eden after the fall. After the fall, God promised that the seed of the woman would crush the head of the serpent, while the serpent would also bruise the heel of the seed of the woman. We know the seed of the woman is Christ, and Christ needed to come in human form and be born of a woman, which is why of a virgin, which is why God needed a human representative who would work with him so as to bring the seed of the woman to the earth. God found that person in Abraham. Abraham's story is interesting, and when you think about Abraham, think about someone whom God looked at all the people on earth, and you know that he is a God who sees the end from the beginning. So he looked at Abraham and he saw Abraham's descendants hundreds of years into the future, thousands of years into the future. And he knew, okay, it would be possible for me to bring the Messiah through Abraham. Therefore, Abraham became a very important person for God. He needed to preserve him, he needed to teach him his ways, and lead him on the path that he wanted him to. At the same time, preserving Abraham's right to choose. Remember that one thing God will never compromise on is the question of your free will. God will always preserve your free will, he will defend it all the way to hell. This is why sometimes people say, why is there so much evil on the earth? Why is God not doing anything? It's because God will preserve your free will. God doesn't violate free will. What he will do is he will orchestrate circumstances so as to make it possible for you to make the right choices. He will put obstacles on your path if you're going in the wrong direction. This way, he can keep you on the straight and narrow. But he will not come and try to manipulate you like as though you were a robot or a marionette. So that is important for us to know. God does not manipulate us, he gives us free will. So he saw Abraham and he saw Abraham's descendants. Yes, they might go through ups and downs, but eventually Abraham's line would produce a Messiah. So it was important to preserve Abraham. And he had a special relationship with Abraham, which we have explained, that to many people, that relationship might amount to favoritism. The Lord was choosing, treating him as being special, and leaving the rest of the world to rot, as it were, but that's really not true. God continued to care for the whole world, and he still does even today. The Bible says, "He lets his reign fall on the land of the righteous as well as on the land of the wicked." God cares for both good and bad people, that's just his nature. So whilst maintaining a special relationship with Abraham, he continued to provide for the earth. Okay, and it's important to know that even with him having a special relationship with Abraham, if somebody outside of the Commonwealth of Abraham's seed, in other words, the Israelites, was willing to have a deeper relationship with God, God always drew near him. The Bible says, "Draw near me and I will draw near you." So we know that God, he has open arms for everybody. So coming back to what I was talking about earlier, Abraham's seed, the son of Abraham, Isaac, gave birth to Jacob, then Jacob gave rise to Israel. Israel spent 400 years, 430 years in captivity in Egypt, and then they returned to the Promised Land via Mount Sinai. The Mount Sinai experience was extremely important to God because this was a time for God to introduce himself to the people. Mind you, he had already introduced himself to Moses in the burning bush experience. And you can tell from the whole encounter of the burning bush experience, which you can find in Exodus chapter 3, that God wasn't alien to Moses. God simply introduced himself as the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, and straight away Moses knew who he was talking to. Moses's only gripe was, "God, I am not qualified for the job that you are trying to get me to do, send someone else." But he didn't say, "I don't know who you are and why should I even care?" He knew who God was. But once he had brought the people to Mount Sinai, God took it upon himself to introduce himself to the people. He wanted the people to get to know him. Because they were Abraham's seed, and there was a need to foster the same relationship that he had with Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. And so he introduced himself. But the manner in which the Lord introduced himself was a bit different from the way he introduced himself to Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. He showed himself to Abraham in dreams. He also came in a physical form in Genesis chapter 18. Some people believe it's angelic, others believe it's God. But there's a lot there that points that to the fact that it was God because it says, "The Lord said to him." So we believe that the Lord made a pre-incarnate appearance to Abraham in Genesis chapter 18. But at Mount Sinai, that's not what the Lord did. He didn't appear in human form on the mountain and start talking to the people. You would ask yourself this question, why did he not choose a kind of an intimate encounter that he had had with Abraham? And the answer is very simple. When you're dealing with a crowd, you deal with them differently from when you're dealing with a person. They had Moses, whom they respected, revered as a leader. Yet anytime they ran into difficulties, they were murmuring against him, they were murmuring about God. So the Lord knew that at Mount Sinai, he could not make what I call a weak showing, a weak appearance. The people had already seen God in the pillar of cloud by day and the pillar of fire by night. In other words, they had seen signs and wonders for the rather part of a year. Because it was a year or three months he took them to Mount Sinai, probably three months. Probably exaggerated it, but it taken them quite some time to get to Mount Sinai. And there at Mount Sinai, by that time, they had witnessed the crossing of the Red Sea. They had seen God in the pillar of fire and the pillar of cloud. They had witnessed the ten plagues in Egypt. They had seen so much. Signs and wonders was nothing to this bunch. So the Lord knew that he couldn't just appear on the mountain, say as a person, or some very sort of mild burning bush, or something of that nature, and start talking. The people was, "Ah, this is just..." It would have made no impact whatsoever. Knowing how crowds think, knowing how people think when they are in a collective like that, the Lord made a very different showing. The Bible says, "He descended upon the mountain in fire and smoke with thunderings." The whole scenario was so fearful that even Moses, the Bible tells us in the book of Hebrews, that he quaked with fear. And the people were attracted, they withdrew from the mountain, they told Moses, "You know what? No one has come close to this God and lived." As if there was any history of somebody coming close to God and dying. But they told themselves, and Moses, that drawing near to God was not a very good idea. So from that day on, was they delegated their spiritual responsibilities to Moses. "You go, you draw near to God, listen to whatever he has to say, come to us with the word, and we will obey." Very simple deal. Sounded logical, it sounded reasonable. But there were major problems with that. You see, by saying to someone, "You draw near to God, you listen to him and come to me", what you've done is that you have exempted yourself from spiritual things, that's what you've done. You have placed a middleman between you and God. And what does a middleman do? Now those of us that are from Africa, and most of us on the platform, probably everybody, is from Africa. And we know that in our traditional African religions, there's always been a middleman. The malam, the fetish priest, they are different Sangoma. Different sort of, maybe Sangoma is not the right word. But there are different titles for these people who mediate between humans and the gods. So paganistic religion makes room for a mediator. Somebody that stands between humans and the gods, whom the humans cannot contact directly. So we know, those of you that watch African movies, if I'm honest, I don't recommend because there's a lot in there that will just sow fear into your mind and create strongholds in your minds, I don't recommend at all. But if you've seen any of those movies before when we were children, we used to watch this TV show called Showcase. And every now and again, they would bring a scene from a witch doctor's shrine. You go there, and then you make inquiries from the witch doctor, from the fetish priest, you make inquiries there. And then they will tell you what they think the gods are saying. You never hear from the gods yourself, you don't have any contact with the gods. You have to trust everything that the witch doctor says. How do you know that the witch doctor is telling the truth? You don't know. And the witch doctors, they did everything to make sure that you believed in their authority. Every now and again, they would tell you the gods are angry. If there was, if a river pera or river densu flooded, overflowed the banks, they would tell you it was because the gods were angry, and they need to make some sacrifices to the gods. You would then accept that. Why did they do those things? To sow fear in the minds of people and to exaggerate their own importance. That's what mediators do. A mediator knows that if he can keep the two parties apart, if he can keep the people that are supposed to be worshiping apart from the gods, then he is in the chief seat. In fact, the gods don't have the privileges, of course, we know these gods don't really exist, but the gods don't have the privileges that the mediator has. When the mediator said to you, "I want one white chicken without any blemish, I want this, I want that," what do you think he did with those items? The gods don't eat chicken, the mediators ate them themselves. So these guys were fattening themselves off of the sacrifices brought in by the people. Why could they do that? It's because the people had no way of knowing or no way of contacting the gods directly. Every mediator has a vantage position which they will seek to capitalize. But the mediator or the middleman sort of phenomenon is not only found in paganistic religions. It's found all across nature, all across life. When I was in secondary school, we had a subject called commerce. It's probably still being taught, or maybe has a different name now. But in this subject, we were taught about businesses, we talked about manufacturers, end customers, then there were middlemen. And the middlemen, these were the, what do they call them? The wholesalers, yes, the wholesalers, and retailers. These were the middlemen. The manufacturers in those days, today manufacturers are much smarter than manufacturers in those days. Today's manufacturers have distribution outlets themselves, that you can buy straight from that way. They don't have to sell things at a discount. When Apple makes computers, it doesn't then release them to wholesalers who can then put a margin on it and then sell it for a profit. No, Apple has its own Apple stores around the world. So Apple is both manufacturer and retailer. So they can retain all the profits. But back in the day, manufacturers only focused on manufacturing. Retailers and wholesalers were responsible for getting the manufactured goods to the end customer. And what do you think they did? Of course, they added their margin. Those of us that grew up in the seventies, we knew of a system called Kalabulé. And we knew of the Makala women who could literally create artificial shortages. So these were market women who were middlemen, so to speak, and would get all the, what we call provisions, milk, tinned foods essentially, processed foods. They would get them from the manufacturer, and then they would create artificial shortages, and then release the goods at vantage point. And when they released the goods, they released them at a higher price. What were they doing? They were capitalizing on their position as middleman. Because you as the end customer couldn't walk up to a manufacturer to gihok or some other manufacturers and knock on the door and say, "I want to buy two tins of milk", they wouldn't sell it to you. You had to go through the middleman. And because the manufacturer didn't bother to sell directly to the end customer, you had to go through the middleman. And the middleman exploited his position. Now the reason why I've spent so much time to paint this picture for you is to show you that if you have a middleman in any system, the potential for abuse remains, it's very, very high. You see, if, imagine that you are doing business with someone in the US, and you are in Africa, and you don't have direct contact with that person, you have to go through a third party, you stand a chance of being duped. Anytime you have a middleman, remember risk. Well, that applies to the word of God as well, that applies to the things of God. We humans are like the end customer. God is like the manufacturer. He is the one that releases his grace, his blessings, designed to reach people. If we put a mediator between ourselves and God, what do you think is going to happen? We are putting ourselves at risk of being taken advantage of by the mediator. And who are mediators? Mediators are anybody that you invest so much trust in and whom you think has more connection with God than you, and who you therefore come to in order to access God. A lot of people who go through mediators to get to God, they don't even know that. I've heard someone literally pray in the name of the God of his pastor. And he thought he was doing something good, but he didn't really know that he had a mediator. Because what he was saying is, "I'm not praying to my God, I'm praying to the God of my pastor." I've seen people give testimonies about the God of their pastor. People did those things in the Old Testament. But the Bible also tells us, in the Old Testament days, people really were blind, spiritually blind, they didn't have any understanding of what they were doing. But Jesus went to the cross to die so that he could become the only mediator between man and God. So there are no more mediators between man and God other than the man Jesus Christ, who is both man and God. And if we forget this truth, we are exposing ourselves to the risks that anybody who works through a middleman is exposed to. One of those risks, number one is that you can be taken advantage of. In Peter's letters, one of Peter's letters, Peter writes that "We should not allow ourselves to be made merchandise of", in other words, treated like goods. Sadly, this is happening. We live in times when believers, people going to churches, are taken advantage of as though they were goods. Imagine going to a church, to a church service, being encouraged to give an offering, you give an offering, there's nothing wrong with that. You give the best offering that you had. You gave the best offering that you had, you sat down, or that you could have given, and you sat down to listen to the message. Little did you know that three or four more offerings were coming, and that unless your pocket was literally empty, this whole process was not going to stop. More than that, when your pocket was empty, you were then told to make a pledge, add money that you didn't have. That's making merchandise of people. That's happening sadly in our churches. But that can only happen when you invest so much into someone that the person becomes a mediator between you and God. You don't really believe in the priesthood of the New Testament believer. The Bible tells us that when God brought the people of Israel, the people of Israel to Mount Sinai, one of the things he said to them, you will find that in Exodus chapter 19, was that "You will become a kingdom of priests to me. If you will obey me, you will become a kingdom of priests." Remember, at that time, they didn't have the Leviticus priesthood. They didn't have a whole tribe dedicated to their priestly service to God. No, they didn't have it. God said the whole nation would be a kingdom of priests. But after what happened at Mount Sinai, when the people stepped back, and then subsequently what happened when Moses came down from the mountain, and he broke the Ten Commandments, you know that it was, they were written on slabs of stone. He threw them to the ground and they fell to pieces. After that happened, guess what? They ended up with a whole priesthood, separate from the people. That was never God's plan. Okay? And then all the difficulties that have arisen subsequently. We are New Testament believers, you and I are children of God. Each one of us was washed with the precious blood of Jesus. What that does is to bring us into union and fellowship with the Lord Jesus Christ. We are one with him in fellowship. And God does not make a distinction between brother and brother, sister and sister. There is no difference between white, black, Greek, Jew, Gentile, etc. We are all one in Christ. When you come to church, just look around the church building, it doesn't matter the status of the person, rich, poor, president, prime minister, servant, slave, everybody is equal before God, including the pastor or the priest or the reverend. This is the New Testament. Jesus paid a very painful price to secure this. So if we turn around from this, and instead of worshiping God the way God wants us to worship, we start magnifying people, lifting them up, putting them on a pedestal so that they become like mediators, middlemen between us and God, we will be taken advantage of. Because that's what happens whenever you have a mediator. The person actually, the mediator will say, "You know what? You don't have access to God, but there are certain things that only men of God can discern. Come to me with your problems, I pray to God on your behalf." Okay? This is not a new phenomenon. If you take your time to study church history, you'll discover that the church has been through these waves. Okay? So in the Middle Ages, this is what happened. There was a time when the church was just a body of believers, enduring a lot of persecution at the hands of the Romans, the Roman government. Then the emperor Constantine reportedly saw a vision in which he said he saw Christ. And Christ told him that if he goes by a particular sign, a sign of the cross, then he would win a victory. So he painted a sign of the cross on all his armor and went in to fight an opponent who was also trying to be emperor at the same time, and he won. And from that time onwards, he signed an edict to end persecution of the church. Instead of that edict then leading to the church maybe growing spiritually strong, etc., etc., that's not what happened. From that time onwards, everybody became Christian. It became a state religion. The parish was simply the whole area. Everybody within a particular area was a parishioner practically. And certain people in the church who were ministers gradually got, over time, this didn't happen overnight, but gradually got exalted to the position of priests. They separated themselves from the congregation. And they went further into putting on special clothing, which they still wear till today. They went as far as to even create a throne for the head of the church. And that way, they put a gap between the people and themselves. But in doing so, they were also creating a gap between the people and God. Before long, reading the Bible was banned. People could not read the Bible. They couldn't own the Bible. Only priests could read it. And then a time came when the priests were reading only in Latin. You could not have the Bible in your native language. So how on earth could you check whether what was being read out to you was the truth or not? But it didn't stop there. Semons were in Latin, even in Ghana, semons were in Latin until, I don't remember, maybe the seventies, before it went back to being English. So you're talking about, they used to call a Latin mass. There are people who are still fighting for the Latin mass to be brought back. And they think there's something glorious in it. What they didn't realize is that they had departed from God's original idea. When he brought the people to the Mount Sinai, what was his plan? That they may worship me, that they may get to know me, that they may have a deep relationship with me. But now, they had, there were people, middlemen between God and the people. Who could the people reach out to him directly? They were given ordinances to keep, liturgies to keep, rituals, incense, this, that, different hoops to jump through. And in the end, today, there are people who believe more in those rituals than they actually believe in the personal relationship with God. Now, that might seem strange to you if you don't belong to a church with that sort of approach. But you know what? It's normal to them. They now seek comfort in those rituals. And the personal knowledge of Jesus, a personal relationship with Jesus, has been relegated. But folks, this is the truth. If you allow yourself to start relating to God through a mediator, this is what will happen eventually. God wants his people to draw near to him, get to know him personally, not through a mediator. So that's really what we talked about last week. And we concluded by saying that when you do that, it leads to spiritual dullness. And if there's one thing really plaguing the church today, it's spiritual dullness. And I don't mean that as an insult, it is just a phenomenon that we've been exposed to. If you are exposed to a mind-numbing experience, your mind will grow numb. That's how it is. So if you are not exposed to the truth, that will, you know, cutting-edge truth, that means that you go to church, leave church thinking deeply about your life. Each day you leave church, you're like, "My God, am I living in line with your principles?" If you walk away from church and it's like you can literally forget about that sermon and never think again, you have been exposed to a mind-numbing experience. And what it will do is you will grow spiritually dull. You will grow spiritually dull. How will you know that you grow spiritually dull? "Have an eyes but not seeing", that's how Jesus described it. Whereby, spiritual things are explained to you, but it's like, "I don't get it." And then it gets explained to you again, and it's like, "I can't get it, I don't get it still." It is a sign of spiritual dullness. Another sign of spiritual dullness is when you lose your desire, your thirst for the word of God. When my child, my son especially, was younger, as a baby, he made up his mind as an infant, he was not interested in any of those processed foods that were being sold in the shops. So once, he was gradually being weaned off of milk and onto solids or semi-solids, and we went and bought all these different foods made by Nestle and different other companies, he wasn't having it. Yeah, he would have some of the cereals, but some of the soups and things that he just wasn't interested. And strangely enough, we decided to cook soup for him and to use simple ingredients, but maybe season it a little bit. and to use simple ingredients, but maybe season it a little bit. And he ate it incredibly well. One day we thought, hmm, that's interesting. So we decided to taste the manufactured ones ourselves and then, my goodness. Then it became clear why our son didn't want to taste it. It was awful. Even though he was only about eight months old, he knew the difference between good food and bad food. The thing about our tastes is, you know, if you, if somebody subjects you to that sort of bad food for a while, you know, it's not surprising after a while, you might think that your child doesn't like to eat. If that's all you want to give that child is that in the processed food that it doesn't taste so good. Well, it's like that with the word of God. If you are subjected constantly to something that isn't wholesome, that isn't coming from the throne of grace, you know what? After a while, you even lose your appetite for the things of God. So if you've lost your appetite for the things of God, you don't wake up in the morning thinking, how can I please God? You don't go to bed thinking, Lord, I wonder if my life is perfectly aligned with your will. You don't worry about whether you are living the best life that you can live. Chances are you grown dull. And the reason why this might be the case is because maybe you have been subjected to a mind-numbing experience. You've been fed with food that is essentially difficult to digest. You don't, you don't like it, you hate it. And now you, you almost can't tell the difference between the wholesome word of God and one that is, has been adulterated. These are some of the signs. And they are dangerous because you know what? One of the warnings that Jesus gave His disciples before He left, you know, in the last few days that Jesus spent on earth, He did incredible teachings, you know? A huge chunk of Jesus' teachings actually came in the last few days on earth. John's Gospel paints that picture, you can see it. But also Matthew, so you read Matthew, chapter twenty-four, you get Jesus' teachings about the end times. Look, chapter twenty-one, you get Jesus' teachings about the end times. And one thing Jesus warned His disciples was, is to take heed unto yourselves that your hearts don't become overcharged with suffocation and drunkenness so that the day takes you by surprise. What was he talking about? He said, be careful. If you're not careful, your heart will grow so dull. That's what he means by being overcharged. Will grow so insensitive to the things of God that the day of Jesus' coming will take you by surprise. How can the day take you by surprise? It happens when your life has grown ordinary. When there is no, you don't wake up to any, there's no hunger. There's nothing in you saying, Lord, I want to know you. Lord, I want to know, have more of you in my life. Lord, I wake up each morning seeking new insights from you. Lord, I want to align my life with your will. I am tired of living a mundane life. When that cry is absent from your life, dullness has set in. Dullness has set in. But there is a way out. It's very simple. Bible says, draw near to me and I'll draw near to you, as simple as that. If you draw near to God, He will draw near to you. And how do you draw near? You draw near with a sincere heart. Sometimes even finding that sincere heart is a problem. You hear a word and then you're like, ah, what this guy is saying is true, but how do I rise up and go, it's like I'm so overloaded with so many things? I don't even know where to start. It starts with a sincere cry from the bottom of your heart. Lord, save me from this situation. I'm in a difficult situation. I can't cope with this anymore. I can, I can hear your voice calling out in the distance. I can hear your voice calling out in the distance. And I want to respond, Savior, but I just don't have the strength inside of me. My life has become overcharged with so many things. I don't know how to rise up and respond to you. Have mercy on me. There was a time in my life, some of you, you know, on the platform will be very familiar with this because I've talked about it in various messages. But there was a time in my life, I remember especially two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, when I used to go to work and then in the, you know, during the break time, I would go for a walk and I'd say, Lord, save me, I am drowning. And you would think that there was something horrible happening in my life at that time. Do you know what was happening? Nothing. That's what was happening. Nothing. When nothing is happening in your life, it's a dangerous moment. Dangerous. John Wesley, the man who made such an impact in this country, in the UK, woke up one day and thought, wait a minute. Am I still a child of God or not? Been persecuted for days. It used to be the case that people would, you know, hurl insults at me, try to assault. Things would be happening almost on a daily basis. And for some time now, I haven't had anybody challenge me on anything. And the Bible says that if you are being persecuted, then the Spirit of God dwells on you, rests upon you. So he was crying and, you know, seeking God's face. He went out on his horse. They used to go and travel everywhere on horseback in those days. And a drunkard crossed his path and said, preacher, and tried to stone him or something. And he said, thank God, I am still, I'm still in your will, Lord. See how those people thought in those days? They didn't think that peace and quiet, when there's no trouble, nothing going on in your life, that it was a sign of blessing, that everything was well. Can you see how that differs from the way we think today? We don't want any trouble. We don't want any walah. We want peace. We want quiet, we don't want any trouble. But how can you know, how will you know that you are in the center of God's will? If there are no challenges before you? If you don't wake up in the morning and don't have any challenges that you need to face in order to bring the kingdom of God, you know, to advance the kingdom of God? If life is just ordinary? Wake up, get dressed, have breakfast, go to work, finish work, you know, spend hours in traffic, get back home, have something to eat, go to sleep, then do it all over again, over and over again. You need to pause and reflect. You need to ask yourself some questions. Something is missing because you were created, you were brought to this earth to do more than just survive. You were brought to this earth to do something more than just live. God created you and packaged you with so many, endowed you with resources because He had a job for you in His kingdom. He brought you here so that you might do His work. I mean, it's a shame, if you found something to do, that means you don't have to bother with the kingdom. You found something to do that occupied you and caught, you know, and now you are caught up in a routine, a never-ending cycle of routines, that means you don't even get a chance to pause and reflect. Am I heading in the right direction? Is the Spirit of the Lord still resting upon me? Is the Lord so happy? That in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, you know, I started crying out to God. Lord, this has to change. I am, I've had enough of this. There's got to be more to life than just any money to feed your family. Even having a comfortable life. There's got to be more than that. You created me for more than that. And that cry was answered. And I had the wake-up call that I didn't even anticipate. I didn't think I would have, I would have. God shook my bed, He rattled me. When I had that experience, I see, you know, I traveled to Kiev for a retreat. And on the way back, I was having the same feelings I had more than twenty years earlier when I was in Ghana on University of Science and Technology, New East Campus. When I gave my life to Christ at the age of twenty and I suddenly was filled with regret. I said, Lord, I wasted twenty years of my life. I didn't know you. And now I've discovered you and I've discovered life. I've now discovered how to actually live. So what have I been doing this twenty years? I was only twenty years old and I was filled with this sort of feelings. Well, guess what? I had that same experience twenty-seven years later. When I thought, oh my God, I lost track at some point. I got derailed at some point. That cutting edge that I had, somehow it had disappeared. And the Lord shook my bed. One of the things the Lord showed me was I had grown to love comfort. I had grown to love comfort. The Lord showed me, now comfort comes in different ways. It comes in, you don't want to, you know, offend anybody. You don't want to ever say anything that's gonna, you know, rattle somebody. You don't want to do anything that's gonna go against anybody's expectations. You want to meet your friends' expectations, your parents' expectations, your husband's expectations, your wife's expectations. You want to do all of this so that everybody is happy with you. But you know who you put the last on that list? It's God. You've met all of these people's expectations. The question is, where is the place for God? Where is, where is the place for God? His place has already been taken by that time. So the Lord showed me that my desire to live in quote-unquote peace with everyone so that my whole life would just be pleasing to everybody meant that I could not please Him. Paul the Apostle wrote, if I be a pleaser of men, I am no longer a servant of Christ. So as I was working hard to please everybody, meant that I could no longer be a servant of Christ. And I wasn't. He shook my bed. He showed me, look, if you're going to please me, if you're going to make good on the promise that you made to me twenty-seven years earlier, then you know what? You're going to have to risk offending somebody. It's not about going out of your way to offend people, no. It's not about going out of your way to, to make things difficult for people you live with, no. But it's about doing the will of God even if it goes against somebody's expectations. And remember, even Jesus faced this. The Bible says that in John, chapter seven, Jesus' disciples, well, not his disciples, his brothers said to him, no one who wants to be known, who wants to be popular, who wants to be a public figure hides away. If you really are this person that you say that you are, you need to be in Jerusalem. This was at the time of the Feast of Tabernacles. His own brethren said this to him, was the Bible said, because they did not believe in Him. The tone of that conversation tells you that there was some sarcasm there. It was like, if you, you know, if you say you are this person, what are you doing here kind of thing? Clearly, Jesus' ministry had rattled even his family. There was a time in Mark's Gospel that they came to call him away because they said he was beside himself. You cannot please God and people at the same time. You have to first of all make up your mind who you're going to please. Joshua made that clear. He said, choose you these days whom you will worship. As for me and my family, we will serve the Lord. Now, when he said that sometimes we proclaim these things happily as for me and my family, but we don't really know what we're talking about. If you truly mean to serve God, like Abraham did, Abraham left his family behind. You know, if you really want to serve God, you are going to tread on somebody's toes. Again, I say, you don't go out of your way to offend people. We must learn to live peacefully with all men. But you know what? Sometimes doing the will of God is just going to rub somebody the wrong way. And if that happens, the Bible says, so be it. That's when you show that God is more important to you than man. And if you don't learn this principle, you are not going to bear fruit. I don't care how many Bible study sessions you attend. I don't care how spiritual you are, how many times you pray. If you are not willing to make God number one, if you are not willing to lay down your life and to say, Father, I surrender my life to you this day. And from now, I want to make good that promise I made to you many years ago. When Jesus came into your life, He didn't come in just to be your Savior and to secure you a safe passage into heaven. He came to be your Lord and to give you instructions on how to live your life. That's what it means that He came to be your Lord. So that needs to happen. That had to happen to me. God rattled my cage as I was in a car being driven to the airport. All those airports have probably been bombed by now, was in Ukraine. But as I was heading for Baryspel Airport, I was burning my, you know, there are different kinds of burning sensations that you can experience. And I'm talking about spiritual burning sensations. Sometimes you're on fire because God is igniting a message in you to speak. So you can send the fire of God in you. But this was not that kind of fire. At the kind of fire that said, if you have to do something with this message that you heard, before you will have peace. That was the kind of fire I was experiencing. And the good thing about the retreat that I had, you know, and I really, really pray that on this platform, we will have an opportunity to have a similar experience. Because the, the, the good thing about the retreat I had was that it was both spiritual and practical. So there were things from the word of God that were, but there were also things that were very practical. A guy just looked at me and just said, there's so much you can do with your life, you know? He didn't even know the depth of the words that he was saying to me. There's so much you could do. And then he started coming up with ideas. Ideas that just changed my life. One of the ideas he gave me has literally transformed my life, my life. Do you know what it was? Very simple. He showed me a little microphone, a lovelier microphone. You know, those small microphones that you can just plug into a phone and they start talking? He said, I always keep one of these in my pocket. And if I'm going for a walk, it doesn't matter where I am and I get a new idea, I immediately record it on my phone. Then I listen to it, then I record some more. Before I know it, I've got a book. Simple idea. I took that on board and four months later, I had a manuscript ready for a book. But not just that. That idea then led to me recording hundreds of messages which, you know, would just start, you know, they would just rise up in my heart. And in those days, I would just, you see, in the past, I would have just received those and maybe shared them with someone every now and again. But now I could record them and convert some into a book, share some with other people. The practical nature of that experience meant that when I left Ukraine and coming for the, to the UK, I had my to-do list. I had things that I needed to do. And I could just start doing those things to pull my life back on track. And as I started doing those things, I saw the Lord come to me in a different way. But even then, even then, it seemed as if I had experienced a revival. A time came where I started to experience stagnation. Folks, it is so easy, no matter how spiritual you are right now, you can experience stagnation. If you don't seek new challenges, if you don't seek new things to do to take you to the next level, you will stagnate at the wonderful level that you've already reached. That is the truth. So I've digressed quite a bit, but I felt I needed to share that with you. It's very important that we remember why God brought the Israelite to Mount Sinai. He brought them there for an intimate relationship, an intimate fellowship with Himself. He wanted to reveal Himself to them so that they may do His will. He wanted to turn them into a nation of priests, a kingdom of priests. And God has the same plan for you and me. Because in the book of Titus, in the letter to Paul, letters to Titus, Paul talks about it. He wants to turn you and I also to, into a nation of priests, a royal priesthood. Okay. Good, I'm going to pause here and just check if there are any questions or contributions from you and also if you have all been hearing me well, because I know we had some network issues last- And also if you have all been hearing me well, because I know we had some network issues last week. So first question, can you also hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can. Good.
Yes, we can.
Good, good. Thank you. Any questions, any contributions at this stage? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. One of the things that we talked about last week was that. Moses, once he became a mediator. He went up the mountain to collect the Ten Commandments from the Lord. And the Bible says that as he descended down from Mount Sinai, his face was shining, was glowing literally. So much so that the people could not draw near. So to help them, Moses wore a veil. Just to cover the radiance on his face. So far, so good. Nothing unusual about it. But then there's a problem. You see, the people already thought Moses was special for being the only person that was able to draw near to God. When all of them were running away from God, he climbed up that mountain, the mountain that was quaking and burning. So they already thought he was special. And then he came down the mountain with his face shining. Well, what do you think that did to their imaginations? It was very clear. It would have been very clear to them that Moses truly is special. But then comes the real problem. Moses covered that glow on his face. And what do you think that did? That only confirmed. How did they confirm? Because now they could not see the glow and they could not see what was happening. And Paul writes about this in in Second Corinthians, chapter three. Paul says, the glow on Moses's face was fading away. It was fading. But Moses kept the veil on. Nevertheless, and Paul writes that by keeping the veil on. He helped to perpetuate a myth about himself. And this myth kept the people in the dark. Now, to bring it to our sort of. You know, everyday language or to our sort of try to relate this to, uh, extrapolate this on our, our, our situation. What does this actually mean for us? In our day and age? It's like somebody no longer having quote unquote anointing. But still operating, but still being in the office. And people thinking that all as well. A few years, you know, quite a few years ago, I I listened to a a sermon about Elisha. And you know, the Elisha and the prophet, Elijah, Elisha had something like a school of prophets, you know, he was training quite a number of people. And they went out to cut wood and the wood, the, what do you call it? The axe head, you know, fell. And and fell into into the river. And of course, they were very poor in those days and they couldn't retrieve it and they were kind of stuck. So they came to Elisha for help. And Elisha cut, you know, put some branch in the water and the axe head floated, which is a miracle because it's made of, it was made of metal and it shouldn't have floated. So. That's the story there. But when this preacher, you know, preached this message, what he said was. These guys who were cutting the wood, when they discovered that they no longer had the cotton edge. Because the axe head had fallen in the water, what they did was to ask for help. But they could have pretended that they still had the axe head, so to speak. Whatever spiritual challenges that you and I face in our lives, and I've explained to you, like, you know, the the moment, the stagnation that I have faced in my life at various points. Anybody can face, anybody called a man of God can face. But he will still be leading people at the same time. Anybody can ha- go through that and still be leading people at the same time. So imagine that you don't have a relationship with God. Imagine you don't know God for yourself. And you, all you are doing is just taking every word from the pulpit whilst the person goes through his ups and downs. What do you think is gonna happen to you? It's a dangerous thing to leave your faith totally in someone else's hands. And not get to know God for yourself. It is a dangerous thing. One day you and I are going to stand before the judgment rune of God and to give account of how we've lived our lives here on earth. What are you going to say to him? Why are you going to say to him, what's, what's your explanation going to be for not knowing him for yourself? When he paid the price, the painful price for this to happen, you're not going to have an explanation. So don't, don't do it. Don't do it. Okay, now let's go to what I want us to share today. Okay. Life after Exodus, chapter twenty. Exodus, chapter twenty, was a critical moment in um, the life of the Israelites and therefore all of humanity. For some of the reasons that I have highlighted, but I haven't highlighted all the reasons yet. The real problem now starts. Why? Because once the Israelites decided not to draw near to get to know God. There was now no mechanism for ensuring that they would stay. On the straight and narrow path, they would stay in relationship with God. So as the Messiah might come through their lineage. God had a real problem. You see, he had guided Abraham. Guided Isaac. Guided Jacob to his will. Guided Joseph to his will. But now you had people who would not have a relationship with him. How could he guide them? You see, God's guidance in the Psalms, God says, I will guide you with my eye. Therefore do not be as a mule. Or a donkey, wh- whose mouth must, or a horse, whose, whose, whose mouth must be held with bits and bridle. In other words, to control a horse or a mule, you have to harness it. You have to use ropes, which is, which is painful for the animal. God said, I don't want to guide you that way. I don't want to lead you that way. I want it to be gentle with my eye. When we're younger, um, and um, Sue and Irene remember this, but my, remember this. But my mom used to talk about how. Our grandma used to raise the her, her kids. She used to correct them with her eye. In other words, if the children were misbehaving and say there were guests around. Instead of telling them off in front of the guests, she would just look at them in a particular way and they knew straight away. What to do or that, what were they done wrong? That's, that's my understanding of guiding with the eye. What it means is that it's subtle. God's guidance in your life is going to be subtle. God is not going to be pulling you like a a horse. That's not God. That's why many people say, God, I want to know you. I want to sense your direction. But really, they are looking for something spectacular or something violent or something. God's no God. God wants to guide you with his eye. But Mount Sinai, when the people said, no, we, we don't, we can't, we, we need a mediator, someone has to come between us. What kind of system can you put in place to ensure that these people will continue to be godly? Whilst not fellowshipping with God? How could you do it? And the system that God came up with was called the law. It's very important. Anytime you think about the law, think a system that God put in place. So that at least the people would stay on the straight and narrow. It was not God's best. It was not his first choice. If it was his first choice, he would have revealed it to Abraham. He would have revealed to Isaac, Jacob, Joseph. He didn't because it wasn't his first choice. He was forced to do so to preserve that nation. So after Exodus twenty, here's what happened. The people didn't interact with God anymore. Moses became mediator between them and God. They asked Moses to bring back instructions from God. God gave them hundreds of instructions to keep, actually six hundred and thirteen commandments in total. Just think about it, it's six hundred and thirteen. God entered into a covenant with them. To keep the commandments. He pronounced blessings, but also made the blessings contingent, contingent upon obedience to his commandments. He promised punishments, including being exiled if they disobeyed him. So this is what happened. This is what they ended up with. Because they would not draw near and get to know God, this is what they ended up with. A system designed to keep them on the straight of, a straight and narrow. So that they would not depart from God completely. He gave them feasts and rituals. He also give them, gave them a legal system because remember that they were going to be a nation. So when you, anytime you're evaluating the purpose of the law. Think about it this way, it's a system designed to keep, or it was a system designed to keep the Israelites on the straight and narrow path. And many people call that the moral law. So many, many people group all the six hundred thirteen and thirteen laws in, in three categories. The moral law, civil law and ceremonial law. So the, the moral law, those are, you know, that shall not kill, that shall, those sort of things are the moral, that shall not lie, that shall not convert, the Ten Commandments and many others, they were the moral law. Then you had laws that were designed for nation building. As they were going to be a nation, they also had to have laws. There were laws about health and sanitation, social welfare. There was a criminal justice system and the laws laid the foundation for that. So, so that was the second, if you like, um, category of laws. Then the third one. God gave them a unique identity. He gave them the ordinance of circumcision. He gave them feasts and so many other rituals and and sacrifices. And created a national religion for them. So that even though they would not get to know God personally. They had a belief system so that as they went into the promised land, if they came at night said, oh, come and worship our God, so we, we have our own. You have a temple where we have a, we have, we have our own, we have a better one. You have sacrifices where we also got our own. He gave them an identity so that they would not feel a need. To copy others. Of course, it didn't always work because the Israelites sometimes would forget what they had and then go and copy other nations. So God gave them an identity. Each time you think about the law, think this was the purpose. Give them a moral law to keep them on a straight and narrow. Get laws to maintain public order and also laws to give them an identity. But spiritually speaking. Here was what was going on behind the scenes. God wanted to keep the Israelites in a relationship with him. And with one another. Do you remember that when Jesus was asked, what is the greatest commandment? He said. Um, listen, Israel, the Lord, your God is one God. You shall worship the Lord with all your heart, with all your mind, with all your strength, with all your soul. And he added another one, and you shall love your neighbor as yourself. And he said, this is the fullness of the law. So. You would ask yourself, does that really cover all three areas? What Jesus was saying was spiritually speaking. What God really wanted is captured in that single commandment that he gave them. By loving God and then loving your neighbor as yourself. But these ones were given so that they would not feel a need to copy other nations and depart completely from their God. The laws were also given as types and shadows pointing to a future reality. They were given feasts and sacrifices, et cetera. And in each of the feasts, they were actually for telling the coming of Jesus. Like the feast of the Passover was all for telling Jesus that it's crucifixion. The idea was that when these things were happening, they would say, oh, now we know why God commanded us to do it. That, that was how it was supposed to be. Each time Jesus did something, when he went into the temple, when he rode the donkey and into Jerusalem. Do you know what God wanted them to do? God wanted them to open the book of Zechariah and say, oh, it's written, this is our Messiah. So what happened? Because the word wasn't dwelling in them. They were following the rituals routinely, blindly, not pondering. Not listening, not understanding what God was trying to do. So therefore, majority of the nation didn't actually accept Jesus. And in seventy A.D., a tragedy happened. The Romans came, just as Jesus had predicted, you know, Jesus predicted. When he was, you know, just when he was riding the donkey into Jerusalem, he said, Jerusalem, Jerusalem. If you knew in this your day. What awaits you? But it's hidden from you. You don't understand. A day is coming when they will lay an embankment around you. They will lay this, this siege. And there will be no stone upon stone. That will not be cast down. Sadly, the Romans fulfilled it in the seventy eighty and they completed it later on. So. The law was designed to point them to a future reality. So that when that reality came, they would be the first to recognize it, not Gentiles, that they would be the first to recognize it. That's why Romans, chapter one, talks about it, that the gospel is given to the Jew first, then to the Gentile. It was supposed to be them first recognizing it because they had a book for telling everything. Sadly, they didn't understand it. This is the purpose of the law. This is why God gave six hundred and thirteen commandments. So the question that many people will ask is, are believers of today required to obey the law? So I've, I've got some exercise for here, uh, uh, for everyone. And so, um, I'm going to need, um, your participation. Does this law apply to Christians? If an ox goes a man or a woman to death, then the ox shall be put, shall surely be stoned. And its flesh shall not be eaten, but the owner of the ox shall be acquitted. But if the ox tended to thrust with its horn in times past. And it has been made known to his owner. And he has not kept it confined so that it has killed a man or a woman, the ox shall be stoned and its owner also shall be put to death. If there is imposed on him a sum of money, then he shall pay to redeem his life or whatever is imposed on him. Exodus, chapter twenty one, verses twenty eight to thirty two. My question is, does this law apply to Christians today? And I'm going to go around and ask you, um, to mute yourself and answer, please. So, um. Shiloh, what's your response going to be?
Please, can you go? Can you go over it again?
Okay, go over what, sorry?
The question again.
The question. Okay. So the question is, does this law apply to Christians? And let me summarize it. Basically, it says, if you own an ox and that ox has, you know, killed someone. Remember, in those days, they were agrarian societies, they were in agricultural societies. So you have a piece of land, you have an ox, and you have that ox, that ox has killed somebody. And it says, if you, um. Um, obviously didn't know about it and it just happened, it says, um, the owner of the ox shall be acquitted. But then it says, if you already knew that your ox was a little bit troublesome and did things like that. But you did nothing about it. And then it pronounces a different kind of punishment. And my question is, is this law in any way applicable to us today, to Christians? What do you think?
Okay, if I start, I will say, yeah, I'll say yes, it is applicable to us.
In what way then?
It's applicable to Christians. Because, um. Uh, because I think in Bible, in the New Testament, something, there's a Bible verse that says. Um, he that knows something, take it in a minute. If you know something and you do not do it, it's a sin. So if, um, it's, it's, it's a generalized thing, and this is just one aspect of a story to it. So if I know that something is a sin and I still do it. I'm still a sin. So irrespective of whether. Um, um, it's in the Old Testament, I think. The law that Jesus Christ gave us that we should love ourselves, us, our neighbors as ourselves. If you really think about it and you know that this thing is going to hurt your neighbor. And you do not do anything about it, it becomes sin to you. You haven't taken care of your neighbor and haven't shown love. That is what I think, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you very much. A very good, wonderful response. Um, please, now I'm going to go around. Um, Araba, do you have a, um, what's your view on this? Do you think this is apply, this applies to Christians? Arba, thank you. You are muted.
Yeah, hello.
Hello, hello, yeah. You, we saw your face briefly, it was very good.
Because I, I, I was.
No, but it's good. Maybe it wasn't a mistake. Maybe you're supposed to show your face.
No, but I'm not supposed to, because. Anyway, uh, yes, um, look, I, I think, me, I think I'm being honest here, what I think. My personal view.
Yeah.
I think that this is a, then. Six hundred and thirteen laws. I think belongs to the ancient Israelites. We are not ancient. I think it was for their time. Okay, but I believe that the, the ten commandments. That talks about, you know, um, what talks about between God and man and then man and man, the six. I think that that still applies in a way. Not later and all those things, I mean, still applies. But this specific laws, that you, then what you mentioned. That is someone's, uh, now, they are ancient. I think they are for ancient. And we are not ancient. That's honestly what I think.
Thank you. I, I always, you know, I always appreciate your honesty and it, it brings some richness to the conversation. That, you know, we are able to look at things not just from one angle, but from multiple angles. So that's very good. Thank you. Okay, so, um, Irene.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
Thanks for me. Um, well, it talked about oxen, so let's see. It's, um, if, if I take it literally. Then I would say we do, we are not having oxen in our day and time, but. Uh, let's say, I, if I have a dog and I know that dog is like, um, it's not, it's wild. And I still leave the dog for the dog to, uh, bite someone. And, um. Like if I don't, if, if that's the first time that the dog has done it, obviously, I, 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 I didn't know. But I will still have to, um, pay for the medical bills of whoever that I have. If the dog has done that too, and also apologize to the person. But if I knew that, 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 I think that, that makes me very guilty. I am just trying to, um, practicalize it in our day and age. I think that, um, like our sister, uh, Shiloh said. They are certain, the, the, the whole essence of the commandment is to love God and to love your neighbor as yourself. So, um, we may not go by the laws, six hundred, one after the other. But I think there's some ways, you, you, what you wouldn't, you wouldn't like it if that was done to you or done to your child. So, uh, the same way that you don't have to do it. For me, I think that, eh, it still applies because it is, i- 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 it's still talked about. Um, a- as believers, we ought to be a shining example of what the love of God is. And if somebody, our neighbor who has not seen God before, how, how will he love God? It is by what we do, that's the person will know that, yes. Um, what we say of our God is true. So I think it still applies to us in this day and age.
Thank you, thank you. So I li- I like the fact that we are getting a variety of views. Um, Christopher, this is your first day. I'm not going to put you on the spot, but if you would like to contribute, then please feel free. You can raise your hand. Use the raise hand button and then I will, I'll, I'll come to you. Um, so, um. Harriet, do you have anything to, um, oh, okay, you raised your hand anyway. So great. Um, yes, please go next.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
Yeah, we, we thank God for today's message, actually. Yes, as my sister just said, everyone, unfortunately, truly. In our days now, we live in the dispensation of the finished work of Jesus Christ. Which he gave us two commandments. You've mentioned, love the Lord your God with all your heart and then love your neighbor as yourself. So. Our mandate is to live in love. Everything that we do, we live in love. So, it could even happen that maybe your child might offend a friend or offend a neighbor's. Um, child. Maybe they might be playing and then hurts a, a neighbor's child. You have to, I mean, show love. And if we are living in Christ, then you should do the right thing. And the right thing is, you show concern. You go and see this child. If the child has hurt, you have to try and contribute. If it has to do with wounds that they have to heal or the child has to take medication or anything, then you apologize. You apologize. So in a way, I could, I would say that. Um, you know, the Bible says that, it said, on this too hangs all the law. On these two laws that Jesus gave hangs all the law. So if, it means that if, if, if you, you live in love. You will not hurt a neighbor. If you live in love, if someone is hungry, you feed the person. If you live in love, if you offend somebody, you would apologize. So, it, it, it applies to us though, but it's in, it's in Christ. So therefore, it has to do with love showing. I mean, love showing, as the Bible says that now he has written his laws on our heart and on our mind. So we realize that practically, if we're doing something that the thing is not right, you realize that you would hear a voice within you. I mean, your conscience would tell you that, no, this thing is not good. So I normally say this, there is nobody that does. Wrong that wouldn't know is a choice. Because the Bible would tell you that he will not allow a temptation that is beyond your strength come upon you. That means we have the power to, I mean, say no to sin. I mean, the Bible says that sin has no, um, power over us or dominion over us again. So I think we, 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 it applies to us though, but in the, in, in, in Christ. Which has to do with love, as in working in love, exhibiting love. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That's a very comprehensive response. So if we sum up everything so far, what people are saying is. Uh, on the one hand, the laws may not apply to us literally in the sense that. You know, um, first and foremost, you know, uh, we, there are not many of us plowing land, pieces of land with oxen. So, um, it might, the literal, it may not apply to us literally. But that there are principles that we can take out of these laws that are still applicable. Because if we go back to what Jesus said, you know, and then, and again, borrowing what, um, borrowing from what, um, Harriet just said. If we go back to Jesus's, the greatest commandment was what? To love the Lord with all your heart and to love your neighbor as yourself. So if that is the foundation that we, we, we are building our lives on. Then we can simply apply that principle, that commandment that Jesus gave and just come here and just look at this passage. What is he saying? You own an ox and you have been aware that this ox is troublesome. You should have done something about it a long time ago. First and foremost, there's negligence on your part. So you haven't acted in kindness. I'm, there's, first of all, maybe there's no wickedness, but there's negligence. And sometimes a lot of the sins that we commit, they are sins of omission, they are, they come out of negligence. So, there is, that's the first point. Then the second point is. Now that it's happened, what do you feel? Do you feel remorse? Do you feel like, oh my God, I have hurt my neighbor? I have, I have, this is really, I must find a way to make, you know, to make good. What, 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 what's been done here? And you might then, you know, like, like, I think Irene used the example of if it was your dog and bit somebody. You know, you want to pay the hospital bill, you want to visit the child, you want to visit the family, you want to really show them some remorse. You want to ease their suffering. Okay, so there are principles there that we can apply. But we may not lift this commandment and apply directly to our lives. Okay. Paul actually does exactly the same thing. When he writes in the New Testament, second Corinthians, I think, chapter eight to chapter nine, I think, chapter nine, he says. That shall not muzzle the ox that treasures the corn. And he is referring to the fact that if somebody is ministering the word of God. Then God has also appointed that the person's means of sustenance, not say that somebody is a full-time minister. This is all he does. This is the only way he can feed his family. Then God has also appointed that through that ministry, his needs should be met. Okay, and the example that Paul uses is, that shall not muzzle the ox. And he's quoting from the Old Testament law. What does Paul do? He uses the Old Testament law, but he only extracts a principle from it to apply in the New Testament. So that's a proper use of the law. It's not to apply it directly because. Christ is the end of the law for righteousness. We're no longer under the law directly. But there are principles there that still apply to our lives. Somebody's just, um. Okay, okay, I think, um, it's from you, Harriet. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, let's see, next one, and then other people can also get a chance to, to talk. Okay, you shall not permit a sorceress to live. Or suffer not, not a witch to live, is, I think, the form that we often hear it. I think that's probably from the King James. Shall not permit a sorceress to live. My question is, does it apply to us today? And if so, why not? And then let's go to other people who haven't talked, um, yet, who haven't had a chance to talk here. And, um, Quacey, what would you say?
Um, that's a charismatic prayer topic, you know. It's. It's right, it doesn't apply to us. Because the so-called witch is likely not a believer. Now, the Bible makes us to understand in Romans that while we were in the exsims, Christ died. So all of us started from there. So if we are going to use that to judge a person. Then none of us will be on this platform as of now, because we were once an enemy of God. Um, at this point in time, the person will have to be reached out to and the message of Christ shared with the person. To win the person to Christ. And when the person is won. Um, the sorcery or whatever it is that would have suffered him or had to die would have been taken away. So, no, the Bible doesn't teach that in the New Testament. Um, we're rather supposed to reach out to the person and win the person to Christ.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. So that is one perspective. I wonder if anybody else has a different perspective. And if you do, please, um, raise your hand and I will, you know, know to, to reach you. But I'll go to, um, I'll go to Mavis next. Mavis, would you like to say something or do you want to type it in? Feel free, whichever option you prefer. So we're trying to see whether this applies to us, you shall not permit a sorceress to live. Um, um, and whilst you break up your mind, I'll go to, um, Fred. Um, welcome, welcome, Fred.
Well, thank you. Hello, please do hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear. Thanks.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, of course, certainly this can't apply to us. Um, in that day, we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, powers. Wicked forces inhead the heavenlies, spiritual darkness and what's, and so on and so forth. So our real enemies are not people. People like sorcerers. Are under bondage, satanic bondage, from the influence of our real enemies. So when you kill them, the enemy in that person just moves into a new person. So one, you've committed murder, you haven't walked in love. You haven't shown love to someone in bondage who needs deliverance, who needs to be saved by you. And to whom Christ has sent you, you go and kill. So you've been one. Um, contrary to the law of love of Christ, which is his law, his law is love. You've broken it. Secondly, two, you have been ineffective in defeating the enemy. In fact, you fulfill the enemy's mission somehow. So, um, it wouldn't apply to us, uh, for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's very helpful. Now, Christopher, do you want to say anything? Okay, so I think it's, um, very clear when it comes to this one. Although we have to also be, you know, honest and say that we hear this all the time. You know, suffer not a witch to live, people pray against witches, um, you know, that they will die and. I mean, there are so many problems with that. First and foremost, just as, you know, both Quacey and Fred have said. You know, we, we wrestle not against flesh and blood, you know, and, and nobody there, there is our enemies. We are wrestling against principalities and powers. But even if somebody was truly a, a witch, you know, do you really have the ability to discern that yourself? You know, so that you can actually pray for someone to die, you know? Uh, are you really sure of that? In the, in the, in the Middle Ages, they used to, they used to put people on, um. They would try to, um, they, they used to tie them and then leave them in the sea and say, if they were witches, they would sink. But if they were not, then they would float or something like that. Anyway, basically. It was something that just doomed people to death. Many, 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 many women were killed this way. You know, um, let's not go down this path. Jesus said, you know, the, to fulfill the law is to, you know, to worship God, to honor God, to love God with all your, your heart. Your soul, your mind, your strength, and to love your neighbor as yourself. Your neighbor includes a sorcerer. Your, your neighbor is not, it doesn't mean that there's a nice person. Your neighbor includes a sorcerer. And Jesus made a point about the neighbor by using the story of the good Samaritan. You know, there was a lot of bad blood between Samaritans and Jews. But a Jew was lying down wounded by the roadside and the Samaritan was passing by. He had no reason. No, absolutely no reason to help the guy. He was a Jew. If you want to try and understand the blood, the bad blood between Jews and Samaritans, just look at what's going on between Israel and Gaza. Talk to some Gazans and talk to some especially Orthodox Jews. Then you will get that vigil between the two, to the two sides. That's exactly what it was like back in the day between the Samaritans and the Jews. But a Samaritan saw a wounded Jew and decided to stoop down and help him. And also paid for his health bill, you know? And, um, Jesus used that example just to show that, who is it that is your enemy by the way? Who, who do you think? Are you sure you have an enemy? No, that person that you thought is your enemy. I'm saying is your neighbor. That's what Jesus was saying. So if somebody is a sorcerer, or it doesn't matter who they are. They are your neighbor as far as God is concerned. And so the Bible says you're supposed to pray for them and be kind to them and be good to them. And as Mass has already been mentioned, they are lost people that need to meet Jesus. If, if all people do, all people did was to pray that lost people would die. You and I would have died before we met Christ. So clearly, this is not right. And it's not right that churches should promote this kind of teaching. One of the things I've discovered in our times is singling out of some Old Testament scriptures and making them applicable to believers. You know, so many people will say, oh, we don't know, we don't longer have to offer sacrifices. That's Old Testament. Everybody knows that. But then suddenly a church, a manager that says, but you must keep the Sabbath. Remember to keep the Sabbath. Remember that Sabbath is holy. They single out one and then they make it, you know, mandatory for everybody to keep. But I said, but wait a minute, did the same God that said, that shall keep the Sabbath, also not talk about new moons? He talked about new moon, talked about feast of tabernacles, feast of Passover, et cetera, et cetera. Have you kept those? Why are you singling out the Sabbath? You see, there's more that we could be saying on this subject, but I think I'm going to leave that for next week. So that we don't introduce too many topics at the, at the same time. Good. Thank you all for your contributions. It's been very good. Um, now, the first part of today's session was really. Bit different, carried a different tone, and I'm very much aware of that. And I don't want to, us to finish without giving you an opportunity to reflect on that. So, to go back to what I was saying then, we were talking about how that there is the need for us to draw near to God and to have fellowship with him. And not to go through mediators. And we talked about how your life can become stagnant. We talked about how that you can, you can become spiritually dull, insensitive. We talked about how that, you know, there was a time in my life when there was nothing happening and that it was a problem. And I was just wondering if this is. And I was just wondering if this is something that resonates, this is something that you, you, you can identify with. And that's something you want to maybe share, something, some experience, so that other people may benefit as well. So let's open the floor for. Pardon me, a few contributions along those lines. Who wants to go first? You can just unmute yourself or, or raise your hand and then take it away. Or you need me to go around and ask people to do so. Um. Okay, maybe I'll go around and since we started with you, Shaila, I'll come back to you again. The first part of today's um teaching where we were talking about our relationship with God, is there something that you would like to share with us from that at all?
Um just one minute.
Yeah.
Um I think for me, it's more of an eye-opener and um. Really strengthen my Christian race right now. And putting me into a better position because um it made me realize. Uh certain things. Honestly, I, I'm lost for words. I don't know what, what examples to give. But it's, it's, it's just an eye-opener. It, every time it's like new revelations to me. So um I, it's now telling me that the position I have taken. That when things are bothering me, I have lifted them and I'm, I'm, they are on my prayer altar. And I don't have to go through anybody. And I'm waiting on God so I hear. From, from, from God. And I think my most recent experience is when I had a conviction. Usually the people would say, the Holy Spirit told them to wash my drink. So all of a sudden I had. Um I had a feeling that, wash your drink, wash your drink, wash your drink. So all of a sudden, God has started speaking to me. Mightily through my dreams. So, and it is me being able to have that personal relationship with him. And not go through somebody and say, I'm having this problem and this problem and I need praying. It's not that I don't have corporate prayer, I do have corporate prayers, but I have that intimate relationship. Whereby I have certain things on my prayer altar, which I am dealing personally with God and I'm waiting for God to answer me before I move. So yeah, it's more refreshing for me and telling me I'm doing the right thing.
Praise God, praise God, that's very encouraging. Praise you, God bless you for sharing that. Uh Fred, I saw your hand go up, um briefly. I don't know if you want to share something.
Hey, I think I have um something to say about both.
Mm-hmm.
Um the first one, I think um the charismatic circles um. This um. How the slogan of you neediness, um it's like something they always say, neediness, spiritual cover. To some people are spiritual covers.
Yes.
Now, sometimes we the congregation to contribute to that. So we move our pastors who were sometimes genuinely humble people. Transform them into people like in soul. Who strive to keep um their reputation or maintain their reputation before people at any expense. Even at the expense of obeying God.
Mm-hmm.
So they become some form of um small goths.
Mm-hmm.
That we have to go through and somehow, though they don't directly say it. For fear of losing their congregation or their significance in quotes. They also try to follow through. And in the end, some of them like in soul begin to consult sorcerers. You may not believe it, but it's happening.
I know it's happening. It's very sad, but it's happening.
I know some who started very well, but in order to maintain their significance and relevance. Are now practicing dark magic. And it's become so prevalent. And so disturbing that even when you try to shine a light to those people, they think you are rather lost. I mean, those under them. Um for instance, there has been an incidence of um people taking something called Yisumaja. I think it's becoming quite common now. At least I know two people who took it. One died, one fell seriously ill.
Can you explain what, what, what Yisumaja is for people who don't speak um uh tree?
Oh, okay, that, they, um this um blood of Christ. So some pastors bottle some concoction. Okay, I think it's called Isobulu, that's how we call it here. It's a drink. But they call it Yisumaja and they mix it with all other things. It comes from concoction and people take it. So they tell you when you are sick, don't go to the hospital, just take this, or stop taking your medication and take Yisumaja. And no one knows what is added to the Isobulu, but people take it and fall sick and die. And you may think those people are stupid. No, they are not. It started gradually. First, he caused them to have faith in him, then he digressed. So because this person started well. And was saying the right things. At a point in time, if you start saying the wrong things, because you know him from the past to be good. You say, oh, then it must be okay, or this is just a one-off mistake. But that's just how rat poison is. Rat poison is like ninety-nine percent good rice and just one percent poison. And that one percent is what does the killing.
Mm-hmm.
We must take charge of our spiritual lives and know that we are in a race. And not just a race, but we are on a battle front. And the enemy is desperate about getting you down.
Mm-hmm.
So as you said, let's have personal relationship with God. Let's not worry about offending people or people not liking us. Let's not worry about being irrelevant in the eyes of men. Provided we are following God. If all this thing comes, there are minor consequences compared to the glory that awaits us. So that's the first thing. Now, to the second thing, I think I'm, I'm more guilty. Sometimes. I, I sit down and I wonder why God is so patient with me. And um I wonder, God has been so patient. And I won't abuse it, or I don't seek to abuse it any further. And pay not as if I'm living in any gross. Um or living a gross and full lifestyle or something. But sometimes the things of this world can easily get in your way and you almost justify it.
Mm-hmm.
And you know very well, this is not what you should be doing, or even if you should be doing this, there's a real greater purpose. There's a greater purpose for your existence. And time is running out. Yet for some reason, we, 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 our idea of success gets twisted sometimes. And again, partly because of my same charismatic movement has contributed to this somehow. We think success is when you have peace and there's a ten breakthrough, you get money. But sometimes you realize that these things are empty. Sometimes I, I suspect to the grace of God who makes you see the futility of all these things.
Mm-hmm.
So let's do the work of our maker while this day, because the night comes when no man can wake.
Yes.
And I think I'm guilty of that at this moment and I repent for off it. And I pray God gives me the grace. To be consistent. I think consistency is the problem. I'm even beginning to think sometimes some blessings in quota are obstacles from the devil. So disguise as a blessing only to steal the most precious thing you have, which is time. And render you effective, but that's my opinion anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So we need the mind of God in taking decisions or even accepting certain blessings. Again, with this is my opinion, but it's what I'm beginning to learn from experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you especially for sharing your personal experience. I feel like it's so important for the spiritual growth. That we share our personal experiences. Um it's, that's what fellowship is about. Fellowship is about me drinking from you and you drinking from me. So you know, hiding our lives away with a veil, in the way Moses covered his face with a veil, is not going to help anybody, at least the mystification. It's sharing our challenges, sharing our successes with our brothers and sisters. That encourages them and helps them to know that they are also on the right path, or that maybe they need to correct something in their own life. So thank you for that honesty and, you know, we pray that the Lord will, you know. Kinda that fire in you and keep that fire going and, you know, will, will keep you on that straight and narrow path. You know, that leads to greater and greater glory uh in Jesus's name. So um now, I'm pretty certain other people want to share the experience as well. Um Harriet, do you want to share anything from the first part of the, of today's message?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it, it's, it's very good what we're doing. The, the, the truth of the matter is. The moment Christ is missing in our lives. Dwelling on past successes and, you know, especially when you're on speed drive. It gets to a point where self-examination is very important because we all get still at a point in time. I can really identify with what you went through and that during those moments. What I've come to learn is that, you see, a, a, all of us are fronting for God. And when God is working, because we are in the forefront and people see us and all that. There is a tendency to assume that you are the one doing it. And when self-grandizement comes in and is like, oh, this is the, you know, one and all. You become so much self, um self, that we draw from God. And everything becomes like a mechanical, you know, instrument in our hands. Until you realize that without God, you are nothing. It gets to the point where you realize, is that all after all the clapping and the shouting? The emptiness, the void, simply because Christ is not, God is withdrawn. It, it helped me personally to realize that who I am, where I am, what I'm doing is because of Christ. I understood it better with what Paul said. I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me. The more he becomes our focus, the more we rely on him. Then the fulfillment of what life is all about comes in. Then we then, we don't only dwell on past achievements and. What God is using us to do and all that. So with me, the, the, the turning point came when. It gets to a point where, you know, just like something, you want to shake yourself one more time, but then you realize God is not there. Then you realize, oh, so all along, it is not by my ability. But Christ who is working in and through me, that is what turned out for me. And I want to believe that it would be for each and every one of us on the platform because no matter how far you go. Not only in the pulpit, because ministry is not limited to the pulpit. No matter where you find yourself. When Christ is churning out sorcerers through you, never assume for once that it is through your ability. Because you may not have it the way we've had it, to realize that we need to fall back. It might be too late. So let us all, at a point in time, check where we stand and reconnect back to Christ. Thank you.
I was, I was on mute, sorry. So all this while, you, you said, um, I was talking and you didn't hear me. So I was saying, thank you very much for um Chrissy for your contribution. And thank you all for um opening up and for sharing um with us. Um it's, it's, I've been blessed listening to your personal um stories and um. You know, I, I, I think it's a good, a good path for us to take, to share with one another. So thank you and God bless you. And because time has passed, I think we will end here and see you again next week. God bless you.